And those joining us on. Please keep yourself muted unless you're called upon to speak. Everybody ready? The Council of the City of Glendale is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kirk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Vukovich. Alderman Doherty.
Here.
Alderman Gelhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmalsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Thank you. A public comment, Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? Mr. Hess, go ahead. I think it may be turned on already.
It's on.
It's on, yeah. If you would start with your name and address, please, for the record.
Daniel Hess, 2055 West Green Tree Road. Last week, they painted the Green Tree Road on each side for a striping for parking. And then on Thursday, they painted the bicycle lane. And Thursday night, a car from from Sydney came down through there at 6:30 in the evening, every bit of 70 miles an hour. He had no problem thinking about doing that because there was nobody ever going to stop him that night. There's very few patrols on Green Tree Road, sadly. On December 1st, I get my bill for tax bill, and I don't know where that's happening, where that's coming to. Range Line Road goes all the way up to Mequon Road. When you get north of the corner there where they redid that construction for that light and stuff, all the way up to Range Line, Range Line up to Mequon has changed from 30 miles an hour to 25 miles an hour. And I go up that way because I'm tired of barrels, and I'm sure everybody else is too. But anyway, last week, I think it was Friday, I was coming south, and I saw this person coming down the road on Range Line way too fast in, you know, north of the Green Bay Road. And I flagged, I flashed my lights. She didn't pay attention to it. There was a cop back in there on Dean Road. He yelled at her immediately. And they really watched that road, especially now it's 25 and so forth.
We need to move the microphone more in front of you. Did you? Yeah.
Is this it?
Yeah, there it says.
I lost a catalytic converter on my SUV this spring. So, you know, the street's not being patrolled. There's nothing stopping anything happening on Green Tree Road. I guess right now, they, these smart people and no common sense being implied. That's all I'm going to say. I'm really disappointed right now. I mean, 70 miles an hour, the guy had no second thoughts about doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. If?
Well, we do have patrols. I was just going to let you know that we had a squad sitting out for three days straight looking for your yellow Jeep, and they never drove by. So, okay. So we do try. We do try.
One other thing, we do have the responsive speed sign that tracks speeds pretty much right up the road on Atwell, on the corner between Atwell and what, that Glen Shore. So that does record speeds, and actually, I'm looking forward to seeing after the striping. I think we collect those quarterly. I'm looking forward to seeing if there's actually a adjustment in speed because we'll actually be able to do comparisons before and after both on Range Line with the striping as well as on Green Tree. We're not going to stop with paint offenders like that. I think we do need enforcement, don't get me wrong. But I think for just general people and recognizing the speed and making it residential, making people know that it's a it's a bike route, those sort of things will hopefully help a little bit. I also noticed we could paint the stop strip in front of Atwell, which is something I'll relay to staff as part of. Well, it's a, at least if you do those little nuanced things, if there is the reason that people just didn't notice or they don't know where to stop, at least they know that's the spot. So we can do those things. But again, we're not going to be able to put even a traffic camera, which isn't legal in Wisconsin in every corner or an officer. But we can at least do our parts ourselves as good citizens and try to drive responsibly. I think I can send you the latest metrics when they come out. I think I did that one time before as well. So we can show you how it looks after the striping at least. I think the striping will help keep the pedestrians and the cars a little bit more separated. I also feel that there are opportunities with our ARPA funding, which we'll be talking about at our next meeting, where we might be able to do some sidewalk extensions. I know that was explored in the past. But yeah, I live across the street. I see it very well myself. So we do what we can.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yes, sir. You can start with your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's David Kearns. I live at 6501 North Elm Tree Road. So I live on the northwest corner of Elm Tree and Clovernook in the Clovernook neighborhood. It's on a corner that you come straight down a hill from Nicolay, like Nicolay going southbound, and that corner causes a lot of cars, again, going south to veer into the opposite lane just because the way that the corner is kind of steering them towards that because they want to go straight, but there's just a little bump out there. This is just, it just seems incredibly dangerous, especially with school starting. I, last year, when with all that traffic coming through our neighborhood, I know that there's other traffic, you know, plans going on, but I still see it where cars are just going southbound, veering into the left lane. I sit out, you know, out my window every morning and just watch cars almost crash into each other. I'm asking for some form of physical barrier to keep the cars in their lane. I have a six-month-old at home. I have a little dog. I don't take them out at certain times because of how dangerous that area is right now. It's, to me, it looks inevitable that something is going to happen. Luckily, in the two years I've lived there, nothing has happened yet. But again, I'm asking for some form of physical barrier, plastic poles, you know, ideally a cement curb right down the middle that keeps people in their lane, something like that. Because I don't think striping will help there because, again, the people just veer off, continue to go straight, so. I don't know if that corner's ever been looked into in the past. I know that you've heard a lot of, you know, a lot of people from Clovernook neighborhood has come up to this common council lately, so.
Well, I'm actually, I've got the map up right now. I'm looking at the the street view here. So you're, are you saying that, I guess I'm looking for the bump out here to see what you're talking about. I can see where cars coming southbound. So they move, are you saying southbound cars are moving over into the left side of the road or?
So it kind of goes both ways. Northbound cars go into the left lane. Southbound cars also go, I guess, into the left lane, in the opposite lane. It's just, if you've ever driven that street, it, you both see that it just kind of, if you keep going south or north, it forces you to kind of cut that corner sharply. I mean, I guess it doesn't force you, but it kind of steers you towards that. And it kind of, you know, you have put in the the speed sign that is on that bottom of that hill. Haven't really noticed any difference in speeding. And then with school starting, I just know that they increase traffic and, you know, people driving pretty quickly down that road, so.
Okay, thank you very much. And we can take a look at that, Carl?
Yeah, we'll definitely take a look at that. I wrote that down, and Public Works Director Charlie McNeil will discuss what some options are there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, is there anyone I can contact for that? Just, I don't want to get this lost in everything.
You can contact myself. I'll get your name and number, and I'll just shoot you an email tomorrow morning.
All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak in public comment? Don't see anyone else in the council chambers. If there's anyone wanting to speak in public comment who's on the Zoom, you can unmute and state your name and address. All right, we'll move on then. The consent agenda has five items tonight: adoption of the minutes for our last meeting, monthly reports, and three payments for work that was done. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please? Move Alderman Vukovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion on any consent agenda items? All right, we will consider the consent agenda adopted without objection, hearing no objection. Do business. First item is a specific development plan, planned development for AHNS Realty, doing businesses Casa de Corazon for a proposed daycare and preschool at 4,600 North Port Washington Road and a planned mixed-use land use classification of planned development. That, which has been before us, have been public hearings. We've already been through this. This is the final development plan. Mr. Fellows, is there anything you wanted to add to what we've already discussed before? Okay. Do any questions for any members of the council? All right, can I get a motion then to approve the specific development plan?
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. Next is a development agreement, which takes the specific development plan and spells it out into the agreement for the same project. Mr. Fellows, or anything you wanted to add to that? Okay. All those in favor of approving the agreement, please say aye. I'm sorry, I need a motion, all this favor of, of, sorry. Can I get a motion to approve the development agreement with Casa de Corazon? Thank you, Alderman Schmalsling, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Gelhard. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Development agreement is approved. All right, the next item is review and possible action on adoption of a budget timeline. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So before the city council and the community is a schedule for the adoption of the budget. The budget process has already begun. Typically begins in August and September with a review of the other North Shore communities' budget items for North Shore Fire, Library, Water Commission, and other things like that. Department heads and the city administrator and the entire city staff have begun to work and put the budget together. So we propose to, right now, release the budget on or around October 1st, with the first review being on October 9th and a public hearing October 23rd with the adoption of the budget by November 14th by the city council. This gives us some flexibility. We're required to then determine the property tax levy by November, by December 15th, excuse me, or the start of the new fiscal year, January 1st, 2024. So it might be a little colder by then than it is now.
Questions, any conversation? Give me your microphone.
Are we scheduling the times for the review as well? For, because we usually kind of say if we're going to do the 4 to 8, or we're going to do it early, it would be good to to at least know that timeframe.
We have, for the last few years, started the meeting at 6, but gone until 8 or 8:30. So we just made it a longer meeting. Is what we've done the last couple of years.
Actually, usually 5.
No, last year we started at 6. The year before that, when we, the year before that, we also started at 6. The, we had orig, we had at one point started at 4. That was what Mr. Mislowski had for many years. Rachel did that for her first few years, and then we moved it to 6 o'clock. And and then we haven't ever gone back since then. It's been at 6 o'clock for at least the last three years.
Hey.
Yeah, we just, we have it on, on the, so it'll be the night of the, we would review the draft budget on October the 9th. We, our meeting would start at 6 o'clock and go through the budget for the first hour to hour and a half, and we'd try to keep it light on the business items for the meeting. I think we've been typically out between like 8 and 8:30. Any other discussion, any other questions? All right, can we get a motion then to approve the proposed budget schedule?
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed budget timeline, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the Nicolay High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, September 29th.
I thank you again, Mayor Kennedy. The city received a request from the Student Council at Nicolay High School to close down Daphne Road on Friday, February 29th. Parade setup would begin about 4:15, and then the parade would be over by about 5:45 at night. Typically, this request also encompasses a request for a bonfire. Sense, in their words, not mine, there's no more grass left at Nicolay, there's no more room for a bonfire, so they're
All turf.
It's all turf, yeah. They are requesting simply approval to close Daphne Road for the Homecoming Parade on Friday, September 29th. No request for a bonfire.
I'm sure that Alderman Gelhard's constituents would say that Daphne is pretty much closed every day. All right, can we get a motion to approve the request from Nicolay for the Homecoming Parade on September the 29th?
I'm moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second? Second, Alderman Schmalsling, or?
My son will probably be there.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Alderman Gelhard, go ahead.
Yeah, the kids could come over to my house for the bonfire. We could do it over my house. No, I did want to say that we should, we should provide notice to the people on Daphne that, you know, the road's going to be closed. I'm probably, you know, something that we always do, but just so that, you know, I can put that on the record that we should notify those people that the parade's coming.
Isn't that actually a requirement with the street closure? The, like, I think what people do.
Normally, normally, yes, you do a street permit or a parade permit. But years past, the parade is about six cars, and it usually takes about 10 minutes. They go in the back, they get their cars together, they drive down Daphne into the high school, and if you're five minutes late, you've probably missed it. So it's never really been a big problem. We've always had someone there making sure that there was no problem. So I don't anticipate it really being much larger than that as they have in the past. So we've usually been able to be a little relaxed. We'll have a squad there to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Carries. Next item is item 4E, Resolution Approving the 2023 North Shore Library Agreement. I have a question that I meant to send you earlier. So I was reading the agenda packet on an airplane this morning. I can't, this is not a red line, so I don't know what Fox Point added. So I guess all three communities that approved it, or not Fox, River Hills. River Hills got the agreement, and their attorney added some stuff or changed some stuff, and there was no redlining to determine what that was.
Yeah, I, thanks for pointing that out. I have the redline version. I didn't provide it because 90% of the things were changing year '22 to '23 and just capitalizing things that weren't capitalized and providing certain clarifications that changed absolutely nothing in the agreement from the one that was adopted May 8th, 2023.
I guess the begs the question, and why are all the communities having to approve it again when this is essentially just housekeeping items?
I will just tell you that from the conversations that happen between the administrators, that River Hills refused to pass it in the form that was adopted by the other three communities. So we are just trying to follow suit and be in concert with all the other communities who have now for a second time passed this agreement, which is Fox Point and Bayside have both passed this revised agreement, and River Hills has done the same now. Well, we have before us a 2023 North Shore Library Agreement that we actually already approved a couple of months ago, so we get a motion to approve with the
Actually, I like to do a motion so we all can at least see what the actual changes are, just in case there is something that was missed. And that's my parliamentary coming out.
I just think this is going to be great for Carl to have to explain to the managers, the other communities, that now Glendale wants to look at what the microscope, the River Hills changes, so we're going to delay it.
Just by two weeks for the next meeting, that's all. It'll give us an opportunity to see what the red lines are.
All right, there's been a motion made by Alderwoman Shaw that we lay this over until our next meeting so that we can all examine what the red line changes were from that River Hills proposed. Seconded by Alderman Doherty, all right. Any discussion on tabling? All right, all those in favor of postponing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, one extension.
While we're on that subject, where are they on the library?
Oh, they just got a bunch more. They're well over $10 million at this point. They just got a couple million dollar, $1 million contributions in. They got a Lou Bars gave a million, Ceilings gave a million. They got $600,000 from a retired executive from Johnson Controls. Yeah, their fundraising's, they're like 10.2 or 10.3 million, because I did just speak with the person heading up the fundraising a couple of weeks ago, and they were over $10 million. All right, so. Yeah. All right, the next item is appointments to the library board, but I guess I'm going to have to ask to lay this, to postpone this through our next meeting because if we haven't approved and signed the agreement, we can't appoint our new, so we get a seat back in the agreement. So I have here before us a resolu, an appointment. Teresa Seem was on the library board, and when her term ended, we had that seat that we had given to the school district to make sure that the things were fine and so that they were so represented. And so there's a, I'm requesting to put Teresa Seem back on the library board, but we can't do that until we have a new agreement that says we get our extra seat back, so. Alderman Schmalsling?
Just one thing, I've, I read the agreement trying to find the differences, so I think it's good that we get red lines, but not that it would probably make much of a difference. So it just states, and I just, just for my own clarity, that one of the seats goes to a school board member or a school district representative. So it doesn't specify which one. So I'm under the assumption that because we would only have Nicolay Union High across all of our districts, it would have to come from Nicolay High School.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the Nicolay representative is sort of doubled as the Glendale representative in the agreement, which has now been updated from 9 to 10 to give Glendale the appropriate number from 4 to 5, which it should have been all along.
We're not getting an extra one, right? We get four seats. We have given one of our four seats to the superintendent to make sure we're in compliance with state statute. When the superintendent per this new agreement has their own designee on the committee, then we actually get our fourth, we get our fourth seat back, so.
And that was approved as part of the agreement in May 8th. So that was already done. The revisions were simply some typos that were correct.
Yeah, just once the library moves, then it'll essentially be Bayside appointing the Nicolay representative essentially.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so can I get a motion then to postpone the appointment until our next meeting on September the 11th, please?
I'd like to split this first because you've got two appointments in there, one for the library board and one for the city events committee under that line item. So I move to split the high line.
If you would just, no, because I didn't prepare the memo. I was flying back today, and I did not get a chance to prepare the memo with the names of the people for the committee, so we'll just do the whole thing next time.
Okay, that.
Yeah. Can I get a motion in to postpone this item also to our next meeting?
I'm moved.
Move Alderwoman Shaw, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, all those in favor of postponing the appointments for the library and the citywide activities committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. All right, next is an authorization to execute an agreement for professional services for water utility rate case and pro forma analysis not exceed 15,500. I'll turn it over to the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So at the July 24th city council meeting, the city council reviewed various aspects of the performance of the water fund. Most notably, the fact of the last two years, the water fund has operated in the negative, including a negative .46 performance in 2022. This has steadily decreased from a positive performance of 4.3% in 2017. Our rates for the water fund have been held constant over the last seven years. So the city staff is asking for the city council to authorize the execution of an agreement with City Water, who has prepared our last three Public Service Commission reports, which is a required annual report for the water fund to be submitted on an annual basis to perform the pro-rata analysis and submit to the PSC for a water rate adjustment for the 2024 year.
And a motion then to approve the agreement for water utility rate case?
Make that motion.
Move Alderman Schmalsling, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey, any further discussion, any questions? All right, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Those no? Motion carries. Next item is an authorization to execute an agreement for professional services for a pay plan and compensation study with Gov HR not to exceed 16,500. And I see that our, our HR director is here, so Ms. Ballwick?
Um.
I will, I will lead the discussion, then Jessica will be here for any questions or fill in where, where anyone has any questions or if I speak in the wrong town or term. So last year, staff looked at the pay classification and compensation system for all staff and did a study to try to ensure internal and external pay equity for all positions within the city. You know, from that, you know, we get a lot of staff members inquiring about both internal and external pay equities. And staff is proposing to hire a professional company who studies these and does these sort of studies. And they specialize in that to ensure the results and to ensure that no internal bias was completed when, when these reports were done by internal staff and to use their expertise to determine who the external comparison should be for the city when we determine where our pay scales would be. Now, this wouldn't determine exact pay for employees, but it would determine the pay scales. So every employee in the city and their position is classified as a ranking. So you're an O1, which is operator 1, or O10. And from that, a pay range has been established. And the same thing would occur if this study does occur. You know, it's felt by Jessica and myself that it would be a really significant help of the city to help assure some staff that their pay and their compensation is appropriate, and the city also does have a number of openings and positions to help ensure that we are hiring new employees into the current pay classification and pay plan that they should be. And then also as part of this study, they're going to talk to every employee, get surveys, and write down every single job and position that is completed by each, by each employee. This will help us to revise some of the job descriptions that haven't been updated in some time, which, again, is an important task to make sure each job description is updated. We do have a number of vacancies at this time, which will help to fund the proposed $16,500 ask that the city is making on this because this was not a budget item. You know, we're kind of proposing You know, we're kind of proposing to do this now, so it would lead into the start of the fiscal year for two thousand twenty-four, so it it's ready by then. Uh, we did receive two quotes for this professional service. The other one wasn't included. I know Jessica has it in her packet uh from Carlson Detman. Uh, we chose to go with Gov HR because of the lower cost and the timeline for completion of the project, as well as Gov HR has seemed to specialize more in municipalities in the area. Carlson Detman seemed to specialize in larger organizations and counties. So just open it up for discussion. I know this is a new item that hasn't been seen before. And Jessica, did you have anything to add before we?
Right, I just opened up then. Any questions or? Alderwoman Shaw?
I'm just curious, you said the job descriptions haven't been updated for quite a while. When was the last time they were updated?
Um, any of the most recent hires that we've had probably in the past year, mostly though with administrative assistants, because we had some part timers that went to full time. So we changed those um depending on the departments that they've been staffing. So some of them were dedicated DPW. We now had one that was like DPW dedicated, then one for community development. But coming up, we have like a position for accounting clerk. We've never had that position before. Um, we are staffing for another administrative assistant, which seems to be a overall department administrative assistant. So that job description, I kind of just did a new one this week for that one, but with our staffing vacancies, we're gonna have some duties shifting over and moving from current positions and because of previous um vacancies, we're not really quite sure. Everybody's doing additional duties. So the current additional duties that they're doing right now are not part of their job descriptions, even though they all state um other duties as assigned, but some of them become core duties. So we want to make sure that the positions that they were hired under might not necessarily be the proper job titles now. And that's kind of why we're redoing them, because they're like treasurer slash deputy treasurer or deputy clerk slash admin assistant. That position may not necessarily exist anymore. They're just based on positions that were created maybe forty years ago.
Other question is, um, I'm under the impression, just from the description, that city administrator Warwick had indicated you're talking about all just job descriptions. So does that mean us City Hall as well as DPW?
Yes.
And I know the police is something else. I I do understand that, but I know there some office roles are are there as well, but again.
Correct. There's some administration in the PD that I'd still like looked at. We have multiple captain positions and some are more job duty specific with one captain versus another one. So I'd still like to have those interviews for those two captains to see the differences between the job, core job duties with them. But yeah, this also includes DPW too.
That would apply to both management and operational staff of uh public works as well to ensure the appropriate duties are captured. Uh, we've also talked about a little um creation of another position in public works. So we have basically a maintenance worker and then a water utility. Um, you know, some of the initial studies and and then things we've talked about, and I, this is why this would help is create an opportunity for advancement within public works to try to retain employees. You create a maintenance worker, one, two, and three to give a little bit of of flexibility. So we'd like some advice on that as well, too.
What have we got, Herb?
I just wanted to point out that uh the state of Wisconsin does maintain a database with exactly this type of information in it. And I don't know if we've accessed that at all i- in this inquiry, but I would certainly uh hope that if we go ahead with this study, that uh Gov HR work and should consult this database uh with the information about these uh jobs and uh the the pay rates that accompany them.
Gov HR does utilize, um, I believe the state one, and they also take comparables within the area size communities, and there's other variables that are closely in line with the size of Glendale, population of Glendale, um our workforce size, our um current job positions that we have existing. Um, I know Gov HR has currently done a study with Sun Prairie, Port Washington, Pittsburgh, and there's there's a fourth one, but they're, they've been out there the last couple of years, and they do have some of the studies, some of the communities that do do them, do publish them sometimes on like the CivMec uh HR. Um, uh, kind of like Brown Table uh that we have online. So there is information out there. It's just not real specific. I would like, like, we would like, I think, just a personalized evaluation of Glendale. We've had a lot of turnover the last couple of years, and we've had hires under three different administrators, so.
And I know uh Meckwan recently um authorized an agreement and completed a study with Gov HR for this exact same thing. The difference is Meckwan's study could turn out to be a lot different than ours because their comparable workforce could be a lot different than ours based on their population, their revenue um and all sorts of other factors that are used to determine who are we comparing Glendale's workforce to. Meckwan could be a lot different than ours.
Alderman Schmelsing?
Yeah, just one other thought, like some positions we have are not as transferable outside of, you know, government employees. So I I'm hoping they'll also take that into consideration, because I would think some are more transferable than others. Um, so I know we've, we struggle to find you know, a finance director, because there's a lot of specific government knowledge that's needed um for that. But I would think some of the other positions we have are more available from just the general population. So um just focusing in on, you know, other municipalities might not be the way to go for some of those. I know you can go like to salary dot com and download databases that way as well.
And we looked at, sorry, we looked at that stuff when we we posted for our accounting clerk, what were some of the um private firms hiring an accounting clerk for? So we tried to um when we were determining the salary for that position, because we're setting up interviews for that, trying to determine what other um non-public entities were were hiring at that position. And that brings up another good point, is when we compared community to community with our positions, we simply looked at job title. We didn't look at what each job is doing, and Gov HR digs into it a lot deeper to go job function by function rather than title by title, which we didn't have the time or the expertise to do that.
Fair enough, and I'm hoping, you know, this is more focused specifically on salary, but I know there's also benefits that come with working at a government position. So um holistically speaking, I think that all should be considered. So um not that salary isn't enough to start with.
Other questions? So I just have one, you know, we got two quotes. What was the amount of the Carlson Detman quote?
Eighteen thousand five hundred. It was a two thousand dollar difference between Carlson and Gov HR, but it was a seven week difference in completion of the project.
Okay, so we save money and we get it faster?
Correct.
And we get it from people that are
Yeah.
that work with government.
Yeah, well, Carlson Detman worked with government. They seem to work a lot with counties and bigger communities. I know there've been some smaller, but Gov HR has done closely more in line with how our structure is.
All right, can we get a motion then to um approve the agreement for professional services with Gov HR?
I moved.
Move Alderman Bailey, is there a second? Second, Alderwoman Shaw. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? One no? Okay. So uh vote with five to one. Motion uh is approved. And the last item of new business is um confirmation on the Silver Spring Drive project items. I'll turn it back over to the city administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Kennedy, again, and uh we have some other people in the office who can uh help fill in where um we need some information. So I'm just gonna give, you know, a big overview of of the Silver Spring Project cost-revenue process that we've gone through and and sort of a look through to the future. Um, so uh the city received a four million dollar federal earmark for the reconstruction of Silver Spring from twenty-seventh to a little before the bridge. Um, as a result of that, um, we've gotten together with Milwaukee County Transit to talk about the BRT and the regular bus route that goes through there. Um, both Milwaukee County um Department of Transportation, well, co- Wisconsin Department of Transportation and the city of Milwaukee to talk about the philosophy and goals um of what we hope to accomplish in the Silver Spring reconstruction. So this is a full reconstruction project that we're talking about, that the cost estimates in there are about twelve million dollars. Um, some of the goals we've talked about and hope to accomplish with the the this big project is uh one, to curb, you know, reckless driving through the area. Two, the road is in need of some reconstruction help. We've seen potholes and some other areas like that. And then I think the third main goal, and I know there's more in the memo, but is to accommodate the um future BRT or Bus Rapid Transit line that will run up from Oak Creek all the way down and terminate at Bayshore. So it will run the majority of the the area of um of Silver Spring. Um, so in in our proposal, you know, we've talked about various options to try to curb reckless driving, whether that's some traffic circles raise medians, raised um intersections, and also reducing the ability for maybe some um vehicular traffic to come on on certain spots by cul-de-sac in certain um streets, particularly primarily in the city of Milwaukee. Um, we've done a lot of that here in Glendale. I think when Silver Spring was first reconstructed, I don't know the year Mustafa probably does. Um, and I in the eighties.
Eighties. Yep. Yes.
So tonight, um, I, we're just looking to generally discuss the revenue, the projected revenues and expenditures from this project, talk about the city's anticipated local share. Um, and then what we hope to be our next steps to try to begin the official design of this project, since we're under a pretty tart, pretty tight earmark um by two thousand twenty-six to spend the money. Uh, so we have a cost estimate here of just over twelve million dollars. Two million of it, which is contingencies, one with the rate of inflation and some possible additions to this project. We wanted to err on the side of caution with that. Um, the the city already has secured a four million dollar earmark, and you know, an earmark is a new project or a new type of grant that hasn't been really seen around here in a little while, particularly for a project like this. So we're all navigating that. Um, we anticipate in this estimate a four million dollar federal STP grant. The maximum is five million to be cautious and um try to secure the money. We we rounded to four million dollars. Uh, the other grant that we anticipated is a fifty fifty tap grant, which is to build some pedestrian walkways as part of this project. Uh, with those, the local share that we anticipate um spent for Glendale is about one point one million dollars. Um, Milwaukee is about two point one million dollars. And this is anticipating the fact that about seventy percent of the roadway of Silver Spring is in the city of Glendale. Milwaukee's responsible for uh thirty percent of the project. The reason why ours, again, is really low is that we were very fortunate to receive the four million dollar earmark. So that comes in and comes right off ours to begin with, and then both of those local grants are estimated. I just put in there seventy thirty. It's a little more refined than that, but seventy thirty um for those cost estimates. Uh, so I'll, you you'll you'll see on there, you know, some of the traffic detail that uh Chief Ferguson, you know, pulled, you know, based on the the area that we were talking about, and we have one speed camera in there. You know, the number of accidents in that street and then the number of personal injuries does remain pretty high, um including five year to date in two thousand twenty-three. Uh, while the average speed limit here or the speed limit on the entire length is thirty miles an hour, the speed camera was hard to pull like specific number of cars going above forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour, because it does it based on averages. So it does.
Other thing is, it is a half a block from a stoplight.
It is, so it's not.
And so it 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 clocks a lot of people going fifteen or twenty, because they're speeding up as they're taking off from the stoplight. If it were another block down.
Yes.
You might actually catch something.
And even with that, the average speed is about thirty miles an hour, and the eighty-fifth percentile is forty. You will see, we did pull the maximum speed. Sometimes it does go over a hundred, but it's always in the nineties. I wanted to get like, how many cars are going into fifty, sixty, seventies, eighties, because I think that even if it's ten or twelve, it's still a significant amount. Because of the numbers were very, very low, it wasn't really pulling anything in the averages. We can see the average speed thirty-six to forty. There's about eighty cars per hour driving thirty-six to forty. So that's, you know, six to ten miles an hour over the speed limit. Doesn't tell a whole story here, but it it's something.
That closer to forty miles an hour is about the average speed if you don't get stopped at the stoplight at Bethmar.
Yeah.
Basically. Joanna and I know.
Yeah, and that really tells the the next story is the is the number of speed tickets, which, you know, year to date, we're at about two hundred and thirty-nine on Silver Spring. We maxed out in two thousand twenty-two, at least over the last four years at four hundred and sixty-nine. So that's well more than one per day in speed tickets simply on Silver Spring. So our officers are out there patrolling for speed um particularly on Silver Spring. Uh, so we have four recommendations in here. Uh, one, I think the main thing is we're looking for feedback from the city council, whether or not the city council's goals align with the goals of city staff and the other organizations that we have met with um that deal with traffic um to authorize us to submit for some of the grants we've talked about to cover most of the cost for um the project. Uh, we'd also ask to prepare a budget amendment for the expenditures. I did put revenue in here. Uh, Mustafa and I had a long discussion today about the federal earmark. I had assumed that we could use the federal earmark for this design engineering cost, and we are not allowed to do that. If we would, we would have to design it per DOT standards, and we want to design it, I think, for local standards for what we want and what our residents want. So we sort of have to bypass that and use that four million dollar earmark for other parts of that. So we had a long heated discussion today on uh on that. I threw a paper clip at him because uh
Did. Oh, maybe we could.
I lost it. I I I was gonna present as evidence um to Jessica. And um I lost the paper.
For the uh, the conversation today cost us about five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is the estimated cost for design engineering. Uh, which is what we're also looking for in the go or authorization tonight to negotiate a uh approval for a design engineering agreement with Clark Deets. We have a cost estimate in there of about five hundred and seventy-five thousand. As a percentage, it's about three to four percent of the project costs from my calculations last. Typically, you see those in the five to seven percent range, so I think it was a pretty good cost, and if we would go down the federal um standards, it would probably be in the ten to twelve percent mark. So um I think that's all I have to say. Mustafa, if you have anything else to fill in? If not, we'd open it up for discussion.
All right, uh, go ahead.
Just to to frame it for you, um, I I know we've been talking about this in more abstract and aspirational terms. Um, Administrator Carl Warwick and I, um we think that um it's time to sort of put some meat on the bones of um the various uh priorities we have. And as Carl um indicated, it isn't it isn't complicated. However, it is complex. Uh, I think that the fact that we're not just building a roadway, and that's the difference between um so uh when we first opened with the WISDOT officials, um, to be honest, and we're not the only ones not knowing how to handle a congressional earmark. They don't either. Just because it hasn't been done in Wisconsin for so long and and generationally, they don't. And um and they knew, we opened with, the city is very particular about what we want on this on this roadway. Um, I know that we've talked at length um for years about, you know, uh, traffic calming and and, you know, various items that we need or we should integrate into this roadway, et cetera. So I think um one of the one of the things we have to do I feel fairly soon is to sort of gather not only political sort of ideas but also community support, right? Um, I don't want to be in one in in one of those situations where why didn't you do this and why didn't you do that and so on and so that this. So I I I wanna you know, if if it's one of the biggest projects we have since, I guess, Bayshore, right? And um we get, I feel we need to get going. Um, because it's not gonna be easy. We're gonna have a lot of heated discussions. I mean, um, because really, we're gonna live with it for a long time. I mean, you know, decisions that were made on the Silver Spring lights with the little, you know, trombones and et cetera, right? They're still there. We're still changing those light bulbs. By the way, the 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 twelve million includes almost seven hundred grand to put new light poles and whatever. So we can even just, so even
Don't rust, I hope.
Even those things are going to, I mean, I I I would like to propose that we take this opportunity to sort of bring together as as a community um and and make something really nice out of it. Um, you know, this new BRT is a big deal. It's right through our community. Um, the 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 reckless driving thing is a is 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 everywhere. Um, we talked with um Um, we talked with um, City of Milwaukee's uh, technical staff. And they have political push to cul-de-sac, just as we did, you know, we did on Silver Spring several decades ago. We did again Port Road, right? It's it's something and. You know, that that's something Milwaukee residents, um, you know, on the tenth, eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth. For sure, it's 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 a desirable thing. But all of that requires time and meetings here with lots of pictures and markers and so. We're urging you to um, allow us to move forward with at least that part, right? Um, I know the number is big. It's it's a big assignment for us for engineering. But I feel the. Big work is. What we have to do in this room, not in our, on our computers.
Okay. I'll open up then to comments and questions from members of the council. You got your hand up first, Alderman Gellhard.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Carl, uh, if I understand the numbers correctly, the project's gonna cost twelve billion, but. The Glendale share with all these grants, et cetera, is gonna be about one million. Is that right?
Based on the city of being able to obtain the two grants, which is the TAP federal grant and the STP grant. Um, and Mustafa can probably tell me, he's probably applied for a lot more of these than I have of what our probability of getting those two grants are. Without it, it goes up a lot. With it, the the project is a one point one million dollar, which is ten percent of the total cost, so it's 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 pretty good.
And and just to clarify, but that one point one million does not include the engineering costs, is that right?
It does. That includes, yeah, that includes everything from start to beginning. It includes the five hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. I just figured a blanket twelve and then added those in. The federally marks are there, it's just the fact that we have to. Prefund the seven hundred and or five hundred and seventy five thousand upfront rather than getting reimbursed for it right away. We'd still have the cost either way. It's just a matter of we pay for it and then we're reimbursed for everything else.
One of the things to keep in mind is that the twelve is. A scoping sort of planning level number, right? I would. So one of our. Commitments to you and 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 to everyone, obviously, is to sort of work in such a way that. The work fits. Both available and potential funding, right? So, don't think of it as, oh, you know, so if if, for example, we don't get one grant or we get it at a certain level, we're gonna go ahead and spend it anyway. At those points, there will be a. Talk given by me to you. Saying, look, this just became a seven million dollar project, and I recommend we don't buy this, this and that thing. At that level, so I'm gonna come to, I mean, you know, there's a version of this thing. That costs five million dollars, right? I mean, you know how stuff works. You can, if you decide to spend five million, you're spending five million. You just don't buy a certain, like, you know, we live with the lights. Uh, you know, I'm I'm just being um, sort of give you um. A and uh. I'm hoping some comfort in that. If there isn't a revenue source as described in there, then. You get to decide. How to scale it back, right? We are getting a new Silver Spring drive. And how many bells and whistles we add to it is gonna depend on getting all that outside funding, additional funding, right? Um, we're gonna go to Milwaukee. Uh, thirty percent it comes from them, right? So right away. It's extra cash inflow inflow. So think about it as more flexible than that suggests. In fact, one of the reasons that we have to start working. Is to start refining. That twelve and give you options all along the way.
We have talked to the City of Milwaukee officials and have received tentative. Um, consideration that they're accepting the three mil- their three million dollar commitment. Part of that three million cul-de-sacking of a number.
Also, yeah, but I mean, they have tons of pavement out.
They would have had, i- if they listened to their residents that want those streets cul-de-sack, they would have paid for those that weren't a part of this project, so. It just happens to be done as part of a larger project.
All right, other questions? Alderman Schmeling?
So kind of paraphrasing, I'm I'm hearing that. Really what we're trying to do at this point is more the vision. What exactly do we feel should be in and out of the the scope of this? And then also, are we looking at this to be? Just to put it in comparable terms. Like the Silver Spring that's on the other side of the highway in Whitefish Bay, are we looking at this to be like the Mequon Road that's been redeveloped up in? Um. I guess Mequon Thievesville, like, these are the sort of things that we're going to start to have to review as a council and bring feedback from our residents.
Yes, sir. Or direct feedback.
Aren't we gonna schedule some public hearings or public meetings on this just to get more involvement?
Yes, of course. So my division, uh, John, I would see. Is that Jim? Jim, um, so. My my first order of business would be to provide enough. Sort of a range of possibilities to. You first, but then our residents. So what's possible, what can fit there, what? What can technically or physically occur? Um, with some notion to you. As to. Like cost impact, some things, I mean, pavement is pavement, right? So if it's six inches higher than. Six inches lower, then it's it's the same, it's the same money. So some things are not gonna cost money, some things are gonna cost money. Over and above. Um. You will notice that almost two uh, uh, two million dollars of the twelve million is what I call contingencies. Which is essentially contingencies, it's. Um, so with that, right, I wouldn't just say, oh, what do you want? It's like, here's eleven things. And, you know, just gauge the temperature of the room, the public. Um, and and then sort of progress just by dropping stuff off, like, and then. You know, be 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 left with like six things. That could be engineered, that's not, that's that's that within the budget parameters. Um, and you go with those. So in other words. One of the things that Carl said, right, so. The the the. What I'm offering as your designer is that you control. What goes in, what comes out. And how that happens instead of. A DOT project, which we're all too familiar with these days.
I've been living in Glendale long enough to know when Silver Spring didn't have all those cul-de-sacks. Because I remember all those meetings in the neighborhood and everything in Silver Spring before, because they were neighborhood meetings. Before my streak got cul-de-sacked. But we also can tell when there's issues, so. There's gonna definitely need to be a lot of public hearings, just as Jim Doherty had indicated, because. As many as their citizens, there's that 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 many opinions of what should be included and what's not, and I, again, this is back. Like a mayor said back in the nineties. And I just remember all those meetings and it was not fun because again, yes, they will be heated discussions, so. It's not gonna move as quickly as we as a council will hope for.
Oh, I I know, and and I guess the 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 message here is that the reason. As Carl said, we're asking you to sort of hire us or tell us to go. Is that. We're not going to sort of engineer something and say, yeah, this is what's happening. We'll deal with the consequences. It's gonna be the other way around. Um, I guess as a as a resident in this community for almost two decades. Um, I feel. That's the right way to do it. Um, it's to hear out the folks who. Care. And sort of engineer that instead of, you know, looking at some. Graph and say, yeah, it needs to be this.
That time Milwaukee did not play well with Glendale at the time, hence the reason. Silver Springs reconstruction was to make a straight road straight again.
Appreciate your your comments, actually, Mustafa. Um, as somebody who's read. Uh, Charles Marone's book, uh, Confessions of a Recovering Engineer. So many roads and so many things have been the the professional engineers telling the community what they're supposed to have. Instead of the community saying this is what we want, design it for us, and so I appreciate you. Saying that what you want is to hear from the community and then design based around the community's values, because I think. And I think that is what is going to make it a lasting project that people will appreciate. As opposed to a project they felt was sort of foisted on them, so thank you. Um, any other comments? All right, we do have uh, four recommendations from staff that were in the memo. Uh, directing staff to continue preliminary design concepts consistent with the discussion today. Um, directing staff to submit the grant applications for the various grants that were listed in the memo. Directing staff to prepare and present for approval of twenty twenty three budget amendment. Uh, that would include the revenue and expenditures for what needs to be spent this year on getting this project started. But basically, the public meetings and the engineering. And then directing staff to negotiate. And present for approval and agreement with Clark Deets for design engineering services for the project, so. Can we get a motion to approve the four recommendations of staff, please?
I'm moved.
Thank you, Alderman Shaw. Second of Alderman Doherty. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving the the four recommendations from staff, okay?
I opposed.
Ocean carries. Thank you.
Let's get going.
Yeah.
It's gonna be good.
All right, next is the commission committee board and staff reports. Um, I'll go first this time. I usually. Jack check, pick different orders every time. This being the month of August, there was no MMSD or ICC meetings this month. Uh, the North Shore Fire Department met, we had the initial presentation of the budget. Um, I actually made the recommendation that we hold over any approvals until September. To give staff for the seven communities time to look at the budgets and and determine what uh, what works for each of the communities. Um, Alderman Gellhard and I had an opportunity in the last few weeks to meet with uh, the folks from the Ramirez Foundation that purchased Cardinal Stritch University. Uh, good conversation, interesting getting to know them and looking forward to the plans. Uh, that they're gonna, they're gonna be working on plans through the winter and by early spring should be approaching us with uh. Uh, ideas for what they they want to to do in terms of new construction, new building. Um, there are some demo things that they were gonna do, uh, that don't necessarily require our our approval. They just need to pull permits for those. That they would be working on through the fall. Um. Chief and I had the opportunity to sit down uh, along with with some staff and included Carl and some other members of the staff in two different meetings. Um, looking at security and crime issues. Um, the I had had a conversation with the owner of Motel Six, lives in California. Uh, he offered to come to Glendale, and so he flew out here with his head of corporate security. Uh, Chief and I had an opportunity to sit down with them. Uh, and talk about the some of their security measures, uh, Chief, actually, who, uh, Captain Fugman was in that meeting as well, I believe, right?
Correct.
Right, and they had a lot of of ideas for security. Um, and uh, did you have a chance to follow up them or meet with them more after that? Do you know if they implemented all the things they said?
I have not had a chance to talk. We haven't had any conversation. I know, um, one of their corporate security people. Just reached out again and asked for updated reports, which we provide them. Um, I'm not aware of of any changes, although I have seen um. So it looked like landscaping rocks and and mold should look like they have some things out there. But I'm not aware of any uh, really uh, large full-scale changes that they've made yet.
Cosmetic improvements are not the security improvements that we want to see, okay? Um, the other one we met with was uh, Pick and Save, uh, the Pick and Save on Silver Spring specifically. Um, has had some significant theft issues. And so we sat down with them and also worked with them, and they actually had a number of high-up executives from Roundy's that were here, so it wasn't just the store manager. We had a number of folks here. We talked with them about a number of security issues and. Uh, our ideas, and Chief actually proposed a number of things for them, so. Um, so two positive things, I I know if you're following some of the things happening on on social media. You do see a lot of our residents concerned about a couple of high-profile incidents that have happened in the recent weeks. And you what they don't know, and so one of the reasons I'm saying this publicly in this meeting. Is that there are regular meetings with business leaders whenever we have any concerns about security uh, issues. We we sit down and meet with the owners or the managers of those businesses and talk with them about proper security protocols, so. Uh, two of those just happened in in the last few weeks. Uh, and then the last thing on my report is our next meeting, you should prepare that our next meeting is probably going to be really long. And that is because the second meeting in September happens to fall on Yom Kippur. And what we're gonna have is an item on the agenda for our next meeting. That we don't have a second meeting in September. We try and accomplish all the business at the first meeting. So that we don't meet on Yom Kippur, or we don't have to try and reschedule a meeting for later that week to have a second meeting in September. So, um, so that's just giving everybody a heads up about the next meeting. There will be an agenda item to cancel the September twenty fifth meeting. And we're gonna try and get everything we. Megan and Carl and I have been exchanging emails for the last couple of days about all the stuff that has to go on this September eleventh meeting to make that possible, so. Uh, that is my report. Madam Clerk? Okay, Chief, anything additional?
Nothing additional, thank you.
All right. City Attorney?
Oh yeah, thank you. I have one item to add is on September eleventh at five P M. Um, the city will also be hosting a listening session on the use of the ARPA funds. Uh, we'll be sending out an agenda um, here early this week. Uh, staff is working um, today, tomorrow to hopefully finalize a survey. Which will go to all residents of the city, asking them for their desires on the use of the ARPA funds. And it will be kind of one of those surveys where if you answer here, it takes you to here and and different questions like that, so we can help. By this meeting, sort of give some of the results and narrow down for what. Residents would like the city to spend this nearly one point five million dollars of ARPA funds. So we will send that out on every medium that we have, including Nextdoor. Um, and we encourage all of the city council to share it uh, to their constituents as well, so. Probably here in the next couple of days. I know Mr. Fellows is working on finalizing that, doing a great job with it, so once we have that out. Uh, we will let you guys all know for the um, ARPA listening session on the eleventh. Uh, we will do that at five. We'll do a little introduction and then get resident feedback on um, the results and then we'll present those.
And I'll be here for that meeting to 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 chair that meeting, but that is not a common council meeting. If you want to be here to hear, but our meeting will start at six o'clock. If you want to come at five to be able to hear the feedback from folks, you can. But we know that that it's gonna be all all the, there's gonna be lots of notes taken, so that all the different things that are presented will be shared with members of the council, so.
We'll post it as a.
All right. City Attorney?
Thank you. As many of you may know, um, there's a property over on Dexter Avenue, fifty seven fifty two North Dexter. Where the city has had a number of challenges associated with code compliance issues. Work done without permits, work done in derogation of permits, and. Uh, we have some work that's unfortunately been encroaching on neighboring properties as well. Um, we've exhausted all attempts to work collaboratively with the property owner to gain compliance. Uh, we sent a number of notices, all to no avail, and unfortunately, at this point. Um, I was asked to uh, initiate suit in Circuit Court in in Milwaukee County, which we've done, and. We're just seeking some injunctive relief um, based upon some of the work that's been done in the code compliance issue. But we hope that uh, that will improve the uh, situation for the surrounding community.
Thank you. Number one? All right, number two?
Nothing to report today.
Thank you. Number three?
I like the mood lighting here.
The lights just went out, but the power didn't go out, it just the lights went off and said, okay.
We were trying to get the middle light to work to see if it was malfunctioning or we just didn't turn it on.
Okay. Well, number three?
Uh, nothing else tonight.
Okay, number four?
Nothing to report.
Five?
Uh, wanted to thank our, uh, I guess Century Fence for doing a great job striping the uh. The roads on Green Tree and Range Line, uh, as well as putting down the sharrows. I had the. Unique opportunity to watch it happen outside my window because I worked from home and I heard the truck coming up. And now I know why uh, it does take three people to do that work. Um, that's a big stencil. Um, so far, I've gotten lots of feedback. Um, of course, the expected feedback about why are the sharrows in the road and not in the bike lane to uh. Educate people that it's not a bike lane, it's a parking lane and that's a fog line and. It's it's essentially there to traffic calm and allow um, separation between pedestrians and uh. And cars and bikes. But I think it's so far gotten more positive results, and I think that. Um, once people recognize how sharrows are used, there won't be as much confusion. Um. And ironically, as I was driving here in my car, I had a pack of bicyclists. Is that a term? Pack? Is that? A peloton? Is that really what it is? A peloton of bikes? There was a peloton of bicyclists, like fifty, that were coming down Green Tree, and I actually had to like stop and wait for them all to go to. Like, back out of my driveway. And uh, they were all staying on the. Parking lane side of the line, but. But at the same time, there was traffic going through, so, um, and no parked cars. It did its job. It it separated the cars from the bikes. I'm happy, so thank you.
Thanks.
A report?
All right, thank you. Uh, we are noticed for a closed session. The item that we will be discussing in the closed session is, uh, the, uh, case that we filed with the Public Service Commission against We Energies. Um, so we'll be discussing that with our attorney. Uh, it is not anticipated that there will be any actionable items when we come out of closed session. There's we're not, there's no memos for us to be able to vote on anything. So when we come out of closed session, we'll be, uh, essentially then having a motion to adjourn. So, uh, can I get a motion that we convene in closed session per, uh, statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub G as indicated on the agenda?
So moved.
Second, move by Alderman Doherty, second of Alderman Schmelzling, all those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Okay, a motion was made at seven thirty-nine P M by Alderman Gelhard and second of Alderman Schmelzling to reconvene in open session. Uh, the vote was unanimous, so we are now in open session. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Move by Alderman Gelhard, second of Alderman Doherty, all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? And adjourned. And just a reminder, September eleventh, five o'clock is the listening session. Yes, five o'clock is the listening session, six o'clock is the council meeting. It is gonna be jam-packed with new business because one of the items is gonna be to cancel or not hold a meeting on September twenty-fifth. So, all right, thanks, everybody.
All right, bye, everybody.
Bye.
Bye, Jim.